Call this meeting Tacoma Park City Council order. Will the clerk please call it all?
Mayor Williams.
I'm here.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Councilmember Clay.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Simmons.
Present.
Councilmember Sniffer.
Here.
Councilmember Schultz.
Sorry, we're a little late getting started tonight. We usually try and get going on time. First item is a -- sorry. Note upcoming agenda items. Next week, the 14th, we have currently scheduled a second reading of the resolution approving Flower Avenue right-of-way annexation. There's been a request from the county that we hold the record on that open through the 17th, which is a week from this Thursday. So more than likely, we will be -- we will not be considering the resolution -- second reading resolution on Flower Avenue right-of-way annexation next week. So tonight, we have the public hearing, and only the public hearing, and then we will come back to that after we close the public hearing record. The following Tuesday, the 22nd, since Monday is the 21st, is President's Day. That Tuesday, the 22nd, is Ward Four night. And we also have some other things on there, including council direction to the city manager for budget priorities and use of speed camera funds. So things may move around a little bit, but that's what we currently envision. At this point, we'd like to go to the public comment period for anybody who'd like to comment on anything that is not on our -- that is not the public hearing item and is not on the special session item, which is the consent agenda. So if you've got a comment on anything that is a work session item or anything not on the agenda, now's the time. If you come to the podium and identify yourself, and please keep your comments to three minutes.
My name's Karen Anderson, and I live on Woodland Avenue.
Sorry?
Anyway, I came tonight to request that you ask the arborist for justification of planting the sweet gum trees on Woodland Avenue. Many professional groups say they are not suitable for street trees because they could crack the curbs and sidewalks, but most importantly is that they can be a safety hazard as people can slip and fall on them. And I've consulted a number of professional agencies, and I'll make this information available through JESSI if you want it. One is the American Council of Consulting Arborists in Rockville, and they said decidedly no. Now, the Montgomery County government does approve them if they're the fruitless variety, although they do that a little reluctantly. Also, the Maryland Department of Natural Resources says they should never be planted as street trees, as does the Forestry Service. So I feel that we have a very large wooded area behind our houses. Many of our lots are up to an acre, and these eight trees could be very happily relocated there. And what I would do is tell you, we're actually going to have a group to eliminate invasive species down in our woods, and we would take responsibility to make sure that these trees were protected from any invasive species so that they could thrive. So I am asking that you ask the arborist for some justification, because I left a little stickly ball on everybody's desk, but this is what your sidewalk will be covered with. This is not a good place for children to play, pets to walk, and people to -- you know, one by itself, feel how hard they are.
Karen, did you -- were you here last week when Todd Bolton, our arborist, spoke about this issue?
I missed part of it. I heard the part about the solar and all that.
He did offer a justification for this.
Oh, what was it?
So you can go back and look at that if you have --
Yeah, I know that we need more of them in the urban canopy.
So if you're interested in hearing what he has to say, just go back and listen to the --
Oh, okay. Is it written anyplace?
Yes. It's on our website. You can watch the whole --
Okay.
His presentation.
Well, what it --
So I know you're asking for his justification, but he has given that to us. I just wanted to point that out.
All right. Well, then, does the council -- can you ever justify this all over our sidewalks?
That's a different question.
Well, whatever his justification is, I'm asking you to override it and relocate them. Because personally, I don't want to walk on these things, plus the fact that we have rules about keeping the snow off so people don't slip. Why are we putting hazards out there? It doesn't make a whole lot of sense. And I'm sorry, I thought mainly the last time I watched a lot of it, and I thought it was basically about the solar and the trees. So I must have missed that. But I'll look at his justification. But whatever it is, though.
I understand you don't agree in advance, but that's okay.
Well, not only do I not agree, excuse me, there are many professional agencies that say no.
Understood.
So who's one lone arborist?
Understood.
I mean, you know, he loves trees, but I have to tell you --
You make a persuasive argument yourself.
He does not really care a whole lot about people.
Good evening. I've been getting quite a textbook education in urban planning with all the recent developments of the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Sector Plan. However, the process moving forward, the plan and associated zoning ordinance and design guidelines has been anything but textbook. And actually, the process is something I know quite a bit about, being a professional project manager. I worked for the federal government. I have 15 years' experience with project management. And to my point, this learn-by-doing process has some room for improvement. For example, last week, city staff outlined a schedule for developing the urban design guidelines over a period of three months with an end goal of putting the final product in the hands of the Montgomery Planning Board. Now, I won't argue the importance of the Planning Board as a key stakeholder, but there's other key stakeholders, like the residents of Ward Six, or more largely, all the residents of the city of Tacoma Park. So what I have here, that it'll just have to be circulated back and forth between you, is a comparison between that schedule that was outlined last Thursday, which should take 65 workdays, and an alternative to if you ran in parallel all the tasks, develop the key components or categories of the urban design guidelines, run them in parallel with one another simultaneously, you could actually accomplish the goal within 35 days, and that would leave you a full month to actually circulate back to the citizens what the city had prepared as a final draft that would go to the Planning Board. Or, better yet, something that would go to the Planning Board for review and could come back to the citizens to make sure that their concerns were addressed in that draft before it goes to County Council, which is not what process that was -- that happened with the current sector plan that has already been transmitted to the County Council. So I'm very concerned about this issue, and I encourage you to consider working with the schedule and seeing what works, but make sure that there is a feedback loop to the citizens and that we get some sort of review of what is going to go before the County Council, before it goes there. So we actually have some time if -- to perhaps make comments on that and to advocate for any changes that would create a win-win situation for everybody. Thank you.
Okay. Can I respond a little bit?
Absolutely.
Yeah, because being in your, you know, your ward, obviously, I attended the same meeting you did, and I guess I'm -- I'm getting two -- I'm hearing two messages, not from you. You're very clear, but from the community. And I just want to say that, on the one hand, we're trying to slow down the process, which the Planning Board has and the city and the County Council has agreed to do, as you well know. And they've elected to postpone the approval of the sector plan until the summer, perhaps July, and delay public hearings and all of that until maybe May. And so my effort has been trying to get that to happen, to kind of get everybody to slow down on this process with the understanding that, in terms of what's going to happen in the, you know, the actual development of the sector plan isn't sort of hanging or looming over our heads. We're not holding up any developers like you might have in White Flint, for example. So I was thinking that time was on our side, but now you're offering the idea to us that some of the stuff we can actually get done more quickly concurrently by looking at some of these things. Is this like setting up subcommittees of -- or so that you could work -- I mean, I guess I'm just a little confused how we can speak things up.
If we can have that conversation offline.
Pardon?
Because this is just a comment.
All right.
I just don't want to get into a long back-and-forth on this one.
Well, okay. Or even in a public forum, even better. That's part of the issue, is that I think that this is an issue that can -- should concern all of us.
And I think that anything that the city is helping to foster or to set up or to work with other agencies like Park and Planning and the County Council, the idea is always to get feedback from the residents about this, what we tell them we want to see.
Well, my criticism is that happens early on in the process, but then there's no loop to, like, put it back in the hands of the citizens for a final review to make sure, oh, is this really what you want? So that's why we end up with a situation where the rezoning of Block Four in New Hampshire Gardens subdivision is still in the public hearing draft or in the Planning Board draft. And I've been told that it's not supposed to be there, but it's still there, and I have no assurance that it's not going to be there until I've seen some sort of -- something in writing that said it's not going to be.
Okay. Thanks. Anybody else?
Hello, Mayor, Council. Giuseppe Chivino, Ward Five. Eight of 10 of the residents in the 2 and 300 block of Hilltop Road and the four houses on Mississippi that have a egress on Hilltop have submitted a request for traffic calming. We support a proj -- excuse me, a project that is going on in parallel for installation of a sidewalk in the 300 block of Hilltop Road as part of the Safe Routes to Schools program. We believe that traffic calming in the 2 and 300 blocks of Hilltop is a necessary project that should happen in parallel with that. Right now, pedestrians are the only traffic calming we have on Hilltop. Once we get them out of the street and onto a sidewalk, people will go even faster through that stretch between Maple and Mississippi. We very much support that sidewalk, but we think that the intended configuration where people will cross Hilltop to get from the trail in the park to the sidewalk will make them sitting ducks unless we also implement some true traffic calming in that area. I think this is also a great opportunity to demonstrate some leadership relative to the Sligo Park Hills traffic restriction issue, because I think by putting some good traffic calming in those two blocks, we may mitigate some of the rationale that caused that group to move forward with that traffic restriction request in the first place. So thank you very much for your time and your consideration. I realize there's some questions regarding where we spend our funds, but I think that the Safe Routes to Schools project is moving forward, and that, I believe, has some funding from the state. And we really need to couple these things together so as not to miss the window with Safe Routes to Schools project and not being able to move forward with it, but at the same time, keeps pedestrians from getting run over as they try to get onto that sidewalk. Thank you.
Did you say you had turned in the --
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Turned it in, and we didn't request specific measures. Instead, we requested that there be some consideration. I think a multifaceted approach that included a raised walkway between the park trail and the sidewalk would be one part, maybe turning that intersection into a three-way stop would be another part, and then maybe doing something in terms of some bump outs or something to help, you know, overall lower the speed through that area would be useful. But we ask that professional engineers offer their opinions, since I'm not one.
Thank you. But you're a Tacoma Park resident, so that usually gives you enough authority.
And I slept in a motel six last night. Thank you very much.
Does the city manager have any information on where that Sligo Park Hills process is? Okay. Okay. So we don't have any word yet. Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Then we will move along to council comments. Councilmember Schultz.
A couple things fairly quick. On the city's website, I was looking at it on Friday, and I noticed an announcement that had apparently come out earlier last week about a special public works pickup of large limbs from trees that were falling -- had fallen during the snowstorm. And I thought, oh, this is a great idea. And then I read that Friday was the last day for that special pickup. I think where they were going to be towing a grind -- chipper around with them. And I think first, this is a great idea and very helpful thing for the Department of Public Works to do, but I'm not sure -- I know I missed it, wasn't aware that this was happening. And driving up and down Wildwood Drive, there's a number of very, very large limbs that are laying around. And I'm just sort of wondering, and I don't expect an answer tonight, if maybe this couldn't be extended for another period of time, because I missed out on it and hadn't known about it. And it's not that maybe I just overlooked it in an email or something of that nature, but I thought it was a good idea and maybe can be extended. I don't know if this is true anywhere else in the city, but it looked like that we could use it in Ward Six on some streets. The other thing is just a minor road thing, and that is at the intersection of Glennside and Kirkland, there just seems to be a -- where the two pavements merge, an awful lot of deterioration in the pavement, and I'm just hoping maybe we can get a patch job out there. I mean, there's a lot of that kind of stuff that needs to be done in general, but this was the only one, I think, that's worth really bringing to your attention at this time. Thanks.
And if I can just double-check on the first item that you brought up, public works directors in the audience. I believe that offer by the Public Works Department was for anything three inches in diameter or less. It wasn't for big branches. So didn't want to give people the impression that it was for -- that the offer was for more than it was.
It was actually for larger items that couldn't be picked up in the yard waste program. Our Monday yard waste program is for three inches and less and less than four feet long and stacked in a trash can or, you know, tied in a bundle. The purpose of last week's collection was just to try to address those branches that fell out of trees. It was in no means a way to eliminate residents' need to hire tree care companies to prune, maintain, remove fallen trees. It's not going to deal with the trees, just branches that fell. And anything that was, you know, put towards the front of the yards or picked up by city crews, we had two crews out every day last week and brought in just massive amounts of wood waste. So it was very well-used. I asked the supervisor to make sure he had been to every street in the city, and he indicated that they had, in many cases, more than once. But I can ask him to take a look back on Wildwood if that's a particular problem street in your area. It's not something we want to continue, or we'll have people bringing out wood that is --
No, I understand that you have to be careful. You don't really set a precedent here, because we can't afford that. I mean, we just can't. But this was like a, I thought, a very generous attempt on the part of the city to help out.
Yeah, and it's done a lot towards kind of resuming the look of the city to normal. I drive in other parts of the county, and it still looks like it's, you know, post-tornado.
Yeah.
And I know that there's at least one location that they were going to come back to that they never did on my block. Councilmember Clay.
I noticed that there's still a lot of branches posted around my neighborhood, too, although they seem to be the smaller branches. But it's clear to me that they're expecting Public Works to come and pick those up. The Elm Lincoln Circle, as happens after we have a snowstorm or ice storm and people decide to go backwards through the circle because they believe it's safer, they then decide that that's just acceptable behavior from there on out. And so we're back to high levels of people driving head-on into traffic again at the Elm Lincoln Circle. It would be great if the police would come by and explain to them that that is not acceptable behavior. I know they'll do it in the nicest of ways. I'm almost cut off on email from losing my power and my email service for several days, but not quite. So if I haven't responded to you, hold on. Hopefully, I'll be done with them by tomorrow. The people are concerned about the Carroll Avenue Bridge dropping concrete onto Sligo Creek Parkway, and so they're avoiding Sligo Creek Parkway, so they get conked in the head with concrete. But they're also concerned about whether it's even safe to drive on the bridge. So it would be great if we could get -- because we got the notice from the police, which is very nice, but it'd be great to get some follow-up for folks, because they're not -- I'm not going to drive on the bridge for a while, until I kind of know what's happening. I'm going to skip to that.
Our city engineer's been in touch with Wayne Maudy of the State Highway Administration as soon as we were made aware of the problem. They've already been out to do inspection, though it was dark. They're planning another crew to come out and do a bridge inspection in daylight tomorrow. So we'll have a little bit more information, hopefully, tomorrow afternoon. Unfortunately, this is not the first incident of concrete falling from that bridge, and
-- Well, and every time they tell us that it's structurally sound, well, maybe the steel is sound underneath the concrete, but the concrete falling is dangerous.
Yeah. Yeah. That's the biggest risk at this point, is the hazard of falling concrete. The bridge itself is supposed to be able to, you know, maintain the weight that it's currently posted for, so no one indicated that there is a problem with the stability of the bridge. However, falling concrete is a big problem. My understanding is the road is blocked off on Sligo Creek Parkway.
Yes, it is.
So you can't drive through it as a precautionary measure. So as soon as we find anything else out, we can send it to the council. We can put it on the city's website. Again, it is State Highways Bridge. It's long been in need of maintenance, and unfortunately, it's having its problems.
We've set a date for the Tacoma Park Folk Festival. It will be September 11th, and so I hope people will consider participating. We're -- our theme for this year is a Day of Peace and Reconciliation. So I think it'll be a lot -- I think it'll be a good festival this year. I'm happy about that. I've got a lot of thanks to the city and Darrell for fixing 410, even if just temporarily. People have said that their quality of life on 410 has significantly improved, and other people have reported that they're no longer driving into oncoming traffic to avoid giant potholes. I want to make sure that the city manager knows that we've had more power outages in the Long Branch-Sligo neighborhood, apparently specific to one or two transformers that are burning out, and then I guess maybe they're not getting properly fixed. And I don't know if you're aware of that, but we should add that to the list of communications with Pepco. It's sort of adding insult to injury. Oh, apparently, there are some folks doing some testing in Sligo Creek of the Waterway post-Washington Adventist Hospital diesel gasoline spill, and residents are aware of that, and they would like to know what the results of the tests are. So if we could ask -- I don't know if that's being done by the county or it's done by the hospital, but it would be nice to know if they're testing it and be able to report that back to the residents. While we're talking about the Flower Carroll area, a lot of the neighbors have commented after seeing this on the agenda tonight that we really make sure we talk about the Flower Carroll intersection when we talk about Flower Avenue, since they've been begging for State Highway Administration to do something about that intersection. And my last announcement is that I have 600 boxes of Girl Scout cookies in my living room. They cost $4 a box. You can come over anytime if you'd like to buy some Girl Scout cookies. Thank you.
Councilmember Wright.
I already have my five here. I don't know that I --
Not only that, but you paid for seven. You only took five and you paid for seven. You're a stellar citizen.
I might come over and get some more after I bring you something like this. First, you know, I think one of the wonderful things about Ward Five night was that I got to have a significant conversation with Giuseppe about the exact road that he mentioned in council comments tonight. So I think it shows that it's a very effective way for us to get a deeper engagement with citizens. I look forward to having that petition come before the council, and after having that discussion and having jogged along that area, I couldn't agree more that it would be great to have some way for people to more safely get from the park over to the sidewalk, particularly once the sidewalk is in place. Next item is also a Pepco-related item. Pepco replaced a number of poles. I think they're continuing to replace poles, at least in the Penn neighborhood. They replaced them along Maple Avenue, but they haven't taken the old poles down, so they have put these new poles up. It seems like some of the maybe cable and telephone services are still connected to the old poles. There's big piles of dirt and mud that were dug up to put in the new poles. So I really would like an update on when they're going to finish that job. The buses -- the small buses seem to be back on Maple Avenue, not the large buses, but we haven't gotten any formal communication from the county about that. Residents are happy about that, but it would be good if we could check into the county and understand, have they -- did they resolve the lawsuit issue? Did they fix the buses that had the fire problem? Is this permanent? Is there going to be some switchback? What's the -- and mainly, I'm concerned about this because it was a long time in getting it fixed, and I want to make sure that they understand that the policy is to have small buses and that we don't have to refight that policy battle in the future. Next item really quickly is, I'm looking forward to hearing about Flower Avenue tonight. You know, I've been one of the -- I've been a council member who's been skeptical about some of the votes we've taken so far. That's mainly been about the process and my concern that we were voting on something and the kind of ball was rolling downhill already before we would have information. So I look forward to getting information tonight and getting information about -- from the survey that we paid to have do -- done on the area. That's the ownership survey, not a survey where we went out and talked to people, but the surveyors, and look forward to hearing about that tonight and voting on it in future weeks. And then, lastly, something that's just outside our area is that the corner of Fenton and Philadelphia, the intersection is just horrible. I know that's not within the city bounds, but many residents within Tacoma Park travel along there. They turn onto Fenton and onto Philadelphia, and it's just a -- there are potholes that are getting close to rivaling some of the potholes that Darrell and the Public Works crew did a great job of rectifying in the short term on Ethan Allen. So I wonder if we might -- that's kind of a funny road, because there's Fenton going on, but then there's the State Highway running there, so maybe we need to engage Councilmember Irvin's own facility as well.
Councilmember Robinson.
There were crews digging parallel, I can't call them cuts, in Ethan Allen today, almost all day, and they put these parallel cuts for a good, long length of Ethan Allen. Do we know what that was for? And it's right through many of our patches.
I don't have any specific knowledge of it. My guess would be Washington Gas, as they're planning to do a high-pressure line replacement in that area. Most of the work that they intend to do will be boring and under the street. They will need access to each of the house connections, so the only excavation is supposed to be related to the replacing the connections between the house lines and the service line.
There was several -- there's several blocks flowing where parallel cuts right in the middle of the lane are going down, which seems like they're going to dig that entire half of the street up.
Yeah. I'll have the city engineer look into it tomorrow and get back with you.
Okay. Thank you.
Don't we own that road now?
I think we do.
Don't they have to get a permit from us to do that?
Well, we have given Washington Gas a permit for their work, so that's why my assumption is that it's Washington Gas's work. The conditions of the permit, I don't recall exactly, but it wasn't to include any major excavation.
It wasn't?
No.
Murr.
It became a short-lived [inaudible]. They had stopped slow traffic people out there, took a chunk of the deck.
Councilmember Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just, a couple things. One is that the Independence Day parade and fireworks and other activities this year has been decided to be on July 4th. Imagine that. And then I'd also like to just remind everyone that February 22nd is Ward Four night at the city council, and I encourage all Ward Four residents to come, including bring your children, so that they can learn a little about civics, get a chance to participate in meetings, and see how their city is run. Thank you.
I've just got a couple quick things. I just wanted to say that I and a number of other residents attended any one of the three performances that went on this past weekend of the original play written by city resident John Guernsey, which was in this auditorium, Love at Last Sight. It was a lot of fun for people who attended. There were 21 musical numbers, and everybody really enjoyed it, so it was great to see an additional type of activity taking place in the auditorium. And I know that a number of people who attended came in the building and said, where's the auditorium? Where's this going to be? They hadn't been here to see this facility, so they got to enjoy it. Wanted to remind folks that this coming Sunday, February 13th, is going to be the official rollout of the Budget Game, and if anybody's interested in attending that, if you would let me or your council member know, so we have an accurate count and we know how many game boards and how many attendees and how many facilitators we need, that's going to be, again, this Sunday, February 13th, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. at Tacoma Park Presbyterian Church at the corner of Maple and Tulip. and Tulip with an entrance on Tulip. And it'll be in the basement. We're not sure which side of the basement, but that's where it'll be, and this will be an opportunity to learn more about the budget, have a conversation about possible ways to manage the city's budget going forward in the future. And there will be other opportunities to play the budget game as well, but this will be the first big opportunity. Also, I wanted to let people know that I'm going to be down on Capitol Hill tomorrow morning for a press conference at 11 o'clock. And this is, if you can believe it, a bipartisan effort on Capitol Hill. I know there's a few and far between these days, but it's to report on congressional bottled water spending and to look at how to reduce bottled water use. And it'll be highlighting the city's not spending any city money on the city providing any bottled water. So I'll be there with Delegate Norton from the district and a number of people from Congress, and should be an interesting time in the Longworth Office Building. And the last thing is I'll just mention that I'm going to be at the Maryland Mayors Association Conference in Annapolis later this week, so I'll be spending time as I have been while the legislature's in session. I counted up last week, and I was in Annapolis four of seven days, and said, "We have to stop meeting like this," but I'm going back there for two more days this week. So...
I'll see you there tomorrow.
And that's all I have. Is there anything else? Okay, then we will move along to the city manager's comments.
I'll just be very brief. I know there's a lot of residents here to testify relative to Flower Avenue. Just wanted to note for the record that included in your agenda packet is the quarterly report of staff activities as well as the quarterly financial report. In regard to the financial report, really nothing that's surprising. The only thing I did just want to call out for the council is that we are seeing revenues from what we refer to as use of money in property, which is our investment revenues, continue to decline. This is an area where I think we will come in under budget. The current budget is about $76,000, and if you go back several years ago when interest rates were much higher, we were actually getting several hundred thousand dollars from this revenue source. And now we'll be lucky if we probably hit 50,000 or 60,000 this year. So that's probably the one area that we will continue to watch, but everything else appears to be on track, and certainly if anything changes, we'll promptly alert the council of that.
I just had a quick question related to...I noticed that the income tax is up slightly from actual to date versus last year. And just wondering if that has to do with some collection timing, or do we actually think that...you know, we've heard a lot about income tax revenue being down or flat. Is this any sort of indication that maybe the income tax situation is kind of improving or is likely to improve in the rest of the year?
No, it's a very good question, Councilmember Wright. Income taxes are probably one of the most difficult revenue sources to predict, I think, for any locality. I think we've been doing a better job over the years. One of the things that we do is coordinate with the chief economist for Montgomery County. There is some correlation between the city and the county if you look over a multitude of years, but it doesn't track exactly. What we have seen with the city, we tend to have residents who may be in the kind of higher-income spectrum and then many who are not. And so we do not tend to see the swings that Montgomery County has. I wouldn't get too excited about it, but I think it's probably a good sign that it's not down. As you noted, when you read a lot of the newspapers about what's happening with Montgomery County, it has been something that has hit them very hard. But so far, we're stable, which is a very good sign.
Thank you.
That's it? Any more questions? Okay, we'll move along to the legislative update.
Thank you all. I will also be brief. Tonight, we have two resolutions on the consent agenda opposing MC 1911 on electioneering boundaries and HB 12 about uniforms made in the United States. Tomorrow, Councilmember Snipper will testify on the Montgomery County's capital improvement program at their public hearing related to Flower Avenue sidewalk, trying to ensure that one way or the other we get a sidewalk in that area and that the county assists us or does the word. I want to follow up that I did send out an email to the council members on a number of kind of new topics that I'm interested in knowing if you'd like us to pursue. I'll just mention the topics quickly, and I would appreciate if people could let me know, otherwise I won't follow the items. One is on gender identity. There's three on energy surcharges and metering questions, a couple on medical marijuana, one on requirement of proof of lawful presence for public benefits, one on recycling in bars and restaurants. So if you...it's fine to say we don't need to follow them, but if indeed you do have a particular interest, that's something to discuss with the council, please let me know.
And you sent this to us already?
Yes, last Friday. I can send it back out.
No, I'll look for...I think I must have thought it was a response on the other ones that had already been sent out.
Okay. Any questions on legislative update? Okay. Adoption of minutes. We have before us minutes from October 18th, October 25th, and November 1st. Would somebody like to move their...
Move by Councilmember Wright.
Move by Councilmember Snipper. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yes, have it. We now move to the public hearing. This is the public hearing on the Flower Avenue annexation, and this is our opportunity to hear from public on this. As I noted earlier in the meeting, most likely, we will not be taking up the second reading next week as we have originally scheduled, but will allow the public record to stay open as the county has requested. Is there anything that the deputy city manager would like to say to preface the public hearing? And then we'll take comments from everybody who signed up on the list, and anybody who hasn't signed up on the list will also give you a chance to comment.
Just a question, a couple brief comments. The first is that this public hearing is about the proposal for the city of Tacoma Park to annex what is essentially the sidewalk on the eastern side or Silver Springs side of Flower Avenue between Piney Branch Road and the midpoint of Wilkinson Hall on the Washington and Venice University campus. That section is right now outside of the city limits. The sections of Flower Avenue right-of-way that are within the city limits are the two lanes of Flower Avenue and the western sidewalk. We'll have testimony today. We've also received, I think, eight emails with testimony, and I do know some others that are planning on sending in their comments. After this public hearing is finally closed, and that's still to be determined when that would be closed, the council would consider whether or not the annexation should be approved. I will have some more detailed information at that time as part of your consideration. If you choose to approve the annexation, annexation would be effect...become effective 45 days after that vote. That's...I'm happy to answer any questions after this meeting for anybody who does have some, and I can help you off outside or whatever. Happy to help.
Okay, thanks. So at this time, we'll take testimony at the public hearing, and I'll tell you the three names so that you can get ready to move to the podium. And when it's your turn, please use the podium. If you need to raise it up or down, there's a button there to make it more comfortable. And please state your name and keep your comments to three minutes. I'll use the timer, and you have a display of the timer and the lights at the podium, and you'll hear a single tone at 30 seconds so you'll know to try and wrap up your comments. And then there will be a tone at the end. And the speakers in order are Sean Sullivan, Brian Ellison, and Jeff Zahn. Sean Sullivan here? Welcome.
Okay. I commute by bus down Flower Avenue each day, and I read the background here, and I understand that the Maryland State Highway Administration is releasing control of that right-of-way, the eastern side of Flower Avenue. My comments, I guess, are that yes, the right-of-way is dangerous. When you exit a bus on the eastern side of Flower Avenue, it's near impossible to walk on the right-of-way. It's dangerous because you're practically walking head-on against traffic, and you have to walk partially out in the street. So there are safety concerns. So I would be for the annexation and eventually a project to correct that at some point, but my only concern would be is has anyone on the council thought about or given way to how a possible road project there would impact bus service? Individuals like myself are dependent on the Route 12 ride-on bus to commute to and from Tacoma Station each day. So it's very important to have that regular. And I didn't know how a project would possibly impact that, but that's my only question or concern. So with that, I...that's all I have.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. My sense is that during the construction that Flower Avenue would remain open and that bus service would continue. Brian Ellison, Jeff Zahn, and Kassar Talat.
Hi. My name is Brian Ellison. I live at 8409 Flower Avenue, so I'm on the east side. And I'm not...I didn't really realize I was signing up to speak, but I thought, "Okay, I'll talk." I'm not necessarily against the idea. I don't exactly know entirely how I feel about it, but a couple of thoughts do occur to me. One is that I hope that trees that people own on the east side that happen to be within the potential cut-down zone for allowing the sidewalk are given careful consideration. The other is, I don't know what the timeframe is in terms of any kind of construction, but I hope that those of us who have yards that touch the new sidewalk are treated with respect in the process and that we're not left with, you know, mess in our front yards for extensive period of time. Again, I know it's off in the future, but...and don't know how far, but that's something that, you know, if we take care of our yards and have things that we want to be protected plant-wise, we want that taken into account. That's it.
Thanks. And I'll just say that my sense is that if this is...if we were to go forward with this and if this project were to happen, that the sense is it's to be a green project, and it wouldn't be a green project if we cut down the trees that were there. So I don't think anybody can speak to any particular things, but the sense would be that we wouldn't just come in and cut down the tree to put the sidewalk. Jeff Zahn, Kassar Talat, and Keith Burner.
Hi. My name is Jeffrey Zahn. I also didn't know I was going to be speaking. I live next...I live next to Brian, so maybe that's...it was all planned this way. On the eastern side, again, I am also concerned because we have a very expensive wrought-iron fence that almost borders. It's like two, three feet maybe from the said asphalt sidewalk, which is in disrepair all the time. And I see the pictures that you show as sort of a retrofit of stormwater control, and it looks to me like that would take a lot of space. And I'm concerned about how much of...when you annex...are you annexing our personal property also? And no. And if we get...if you have to do something to our very expensive wrought-iron fence that we put...would we be compensated in any way for that? And also, I know that you do a lot of stormwater retrofit plans, but I was...I seem to see a lot more to prioritize stormwater. Since this is the very top of the hill, there's a lot...on Wabash, for example, there's a lot more stormwater that goes down there, and it's just...it's eroding away the pathway down to Sligo Creek Park. I thought you might want to take that into consideration. That would be directed to the city manager, I suppose. But we have...since Washington Gas came in last year, I think it was, and they did...they redid all the gas lines on the whole block. They came in, and they have...they have changed the whole stormwater regime, and it now dumps down our driveway, and it swings around, and it just erodes away. It goes across my neighbor...my other neighbor down the other side. It goes across their front yard and down the driveway, and just it gouges out the driveway. Actually, I have pictures of it, but I don't have nine copies or whatever, so it'd be probably a waste of time. So I'm just...I just want to know what the actual plan is. Of course, there's parking on the west side. There's a lot of rental units, and there's parking on that. And if you were going to put in bike lanes and all this stormwater retrofits, would it take away the space for the parking? Because that parking is vital for all the residents that live on both sides of the street actually use that parking spaces. And I was just hoping you'd take that into consideration.
I think the answer is that you're much further ahead than we are as far as thinking about plans. Right now, we're talking about gaining space to be able to do something, but then the plans would be developed, and I'm sure that there would be other public opportunities for comments on that.
Okay. So you haven't drawn up any plans or anything like that?
No, we would be going through a community process to take into consideration the kinds of items that you've just raised. That's the situation for the entire stretch of Flower Avenue. There's trees and...
I could go on and on and on.
Absolutely. We'd love to work with you.
Please join us.
If this goes forward, we'd love to work with you in those kind of plans developing.
There was people met with the survey in our yard yesterday.
What was happening was identifying where the property lines are versus where the city line is so that we have that definition, which is required for the annexation.
Do you know if they were inside or outside the wrought-iron fence?
They were on our front porch or whatever, our step.
What they're doing is trying to get the right measurements for your property line and the other property lines along the right-of-way.
Can I ask you, before you installed your very expensive wrought-iron fence, did you do a survey to make sure that it was on your property and not in the public right-of-way?
Yeah, we got the whole...we have the plot, and it says where the NEF track...it's called the NEF track. And it shows you where the...it's not clear where the county stops and where the property owner starts, or it's fairly not clear because there's two lines there.
That's why we're doing the survey. And so we'll have that information at a later time.
Okay. I just want to know if we get compensated if you take it on.
Not if your fence is in the public right-of-way.
But can we sue our realtor or something?
Dan Snyder, of the...you can sue anybody.
Yeah, he's...
Thank you. Kassar Talat, Keith Burner, Marty Edner.
Good evening. I'm Kassar Talat. I live at 8010 Flower Avenue. I think my husband sent in a written statement because he's in Rwanda. My daughter is...sorry that she couldn't make it tonight. She usually comes with me. But we are strongly in favor of the annexation. I think that with the annexation, it will start a process that will only be to the benefit of not only Flower Avenue and those of us who live along Flower Avenue, but also Tacoma Park in general. It's the doorway to Tacoma Park from the north or the west. I can't actually...directionally, I'm a little challenged. But when people drive in onto Flower Avenue coming into Tacoma Park, it actually...it looks kind of seedy. And the way that the speed is controlled is by... And the way that the speed is controlled is by the potholes that's in the street. And so I think that turning it into a green street that's opening, that's pedestrian-friendly, bicycle-friendly, takes into account stormwater drainage, and the creeks on both sides will make it a really nice doorway into Tacoma Park. It's a safety issue, especially on the east side, for people who are walking along that side. And it would make, I think, the whole, all the properties on, along Flower Avenue look better and the people who live there be more willing to walk and make it a more habitable environment. So we're very in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Keith Burner, Marty Itner, and Sharon McGowan.
Keith Burner, 7902 Flower Avenue, proud resident of Ward 5. And count me among those who didn't realize he was signing up to speak when he signed in on the sheet. But I never turn down an opportunity to run that out, as those of you who know me know well. I don't see a downside in doing this annexation. It seems to me that we've not had control of that street all these many years, which has tied our hands about doing things to improve it. I know we're not at the point of making decisions about exactly what we're going to do, but the things that would be most interesting to me would be things that would calm traffic, improve stormwater runoff, and generally improve the quality of life for those of us who live along there. I am curious, though, since I don't see any downside at all, and I'm not hearing so far anybody standing up here and seeing they oppose the measure, what are the downsides?
From the, from the city's viewpoint, long-term maintenance costs.
Some residents may lose wrought iron fences.
Marty Itner, Sharon McGowan, and Mara Parker.
Another resident not realizing I was going to speak tonight, but my name is Marty Itner and I do live on Flower Avenue. And I am going to take this opportunity to talk about a spring that I brought to the attention of Colleen Clay. It's not within the actual area we're talking about. It's just on the hosp, the college grounds on Garland. And I pointed out to Colleen, as I said, it's a little spring that is just bubbling up out of the ground. It's water. And it goes down Garland, it hangs right on Carroll Avenue, and flows down and goes right into the creek. And if anybody goes at that intersection, Flower and Carroll, you'll notice it's always wet. Has anybody ever thought about why that intersection is always wet? It's icy in the, in the wintertime. And Colleen, you can back me up on this. She said, gee, I always wondered why it was wet there and now I know. And I have thought we could take that little spring and maybe turn it into a fish pond or some kind of, you know, turn it into something that, you know, maybe a little wetlands or, I don't know. And I'm just bringing it up because there's a microphone in front of me and I just want to make sure everybody knew that, knew about this and maybe you could build it into your, you know, maybe it could be built into this. I don't know. It is beyond Wilkinson, the Wilkinson Hall, but you talked about that intersection, so thanks a lot.
I think it's important to fix it at that intersection, whether we have the authority to fix it on the college property or not. We could at least address what it does once it gets to the intersection.
Right. And there's concern that it's actually under the roadway in addition to the one you're describing on, that comes on the surface, there's also supposedly one underground. I've never gotten state highway to give me a straight answer on whether they think there's a spring underneath the road or not.
Is there some kind of college?
Yeah. Well, there's more than one. We're concerned that there's more, there may be more than one is the problem.
Sharon McGowan, Mara Parker, and Laura Bianca.
Good evening. I, my name is Sharon McGowan and I live on Haddon Drive, so I'm technically just over the border and not directly affected, but Flower Avenue is our lifeline. And I just wanted to share the sentiments that were offered as far as the potential beautification and welcoming nature that at least some of the designs that we've seen from other cities seem to suggest might be the case. Also, taking your life in your hands, when you get off the, you know, the 12th or the 13th bus, I get off at Houston and Flower, which as many of you may know, seems to be an optional four-way stop. We were standing the bus waiting a very long time this morning for one of the ride-on buses to go by. So I also share the concern about how this will affect not only sort of the ride-on service while things are happening. I know that there's always a little bit of inconvenience when you have a project like this, but service has gone from sporadic to occasional to hopeful to whatever adjective goes next. So I definitely think that for those of us who are not able to walk safely from that part of Tacoma Park and, and your neighbors down to either Silver Spring or Tacoma will be, obviously be extremely concerned about the, the public transportation impacts or at least ways to mitigate that in the interim. But overall, absolutely extremely excited and supportive of, of the project. I think that there also is a little bit of concern about how the parking situation will be affected. There's, the street itself is narrow and the side streets can get extremely jammed up when people are trying to get to various bus stops. So that's another thing, just to put on the list as far as concerns. But overall, very excited and hope to stay engaged in the process as it moves forward. So thank you.
Thank you. Mara Parker, Laura Bianca, and Mike Pruitt.
Hi. Mara Parker, lived on the 8400 block as well of Flower Avenue on the east side as well, and since 2002. And I think that the question I, that's most important for you all to answer is really who's going to be the best steward of this road and this part of our community. And in all the time I've lived there and anyone else who is in the community can tell you, and as you know, just from looking at the Carroll Avenue Bridge, I think it's pretty clear that state highways is never going to be a good steward for our community. There are ample examples from the potholes. My particular part of Flower, there's a dip in the road. And from a stormwater management perspective, there are plenty of concerns with both of the waterways on either side that would be, I would hope would be addressed by the notion of a green street. But I can tell you that consistent pothole problems on my particular section actually caused an undermining of the roadway that cracked the gas main in front of my home. And this was a relatively new gas main. It was less than 25 years old. And that posed a tremendous threat to our entire neighborhood. And that was a result of poor maintenance of the street. I've actually, was coming from another community meeting one night and someone broke the axle in their car in one of the potholes in that particular section of Flower Avenue. The gas main killed a tree in front of my house, a double-trunked white oak. It was a nine-month battle with the state and the, the city arborist was kind enough to help me remind the state that it was indeed their road, which they denied when convenient to them. And when I asked them, why do you fill potholes? They said it was out of the goodness of their own heart, but it really wasn't their part of the road. So there's no accountability. That tree was a tremendous, it was a tremendous loss, probably would be, will be lost if, would have been lost for the sidewalk. But I think if anyone is going to be a good steward of our, I think our trees and our greens, greenery in this area, I know Tacoma Park would be a better one as well. As far as pedestrian safety is concerned, when I've walked my son to Rolling Terrace Elementary School with my toddler daughter in a stroller, I have to cross Flower Avenue mid-block to get to a sidewalk one can actually kind of use a stroller on. From a disability standpoint, the accessibility issues frankly on both sides of Flower Avenue are abysmal. This is one of the gateways. And I think from a broken windows standpoint, if you want to look at it that way, when we have a road that's so poorly maintained, so dark and dreary with incredible pedestrian traffic, that's only going to increase if the purple line goes in there, we really need to have the best stewardship possible. And I think the city would provide that and I would really welcome that and hope that, that you will take this on. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura Bianca, Mike Pruitt, and Patty Snee.
Hi, I'm Laura Bianca. I live outside of the city of Tacoma Park. I didn't realize that I was signing up to speak either. I'm just actually here today because I'm interested in the aspect of the control of city of Tacoma Park versus the state highway administration over the control of the roads. I contribute to a website called MDroads.com. So I've just kind of been following from a distance what's been going on here. And I'm here tonight just to see the interaction in the community and what's going on and just what the community wants and needs are to kind of progress forward. That's all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Whitaker.
Mike Pruitt, Patty Snee, and Lenora Radloff.
Hi, my name is Mike Pruitt. I am the webmaster of MDroads.com. And I also didn't think I would be speaking tonight. I've been following the whole 410 and Flower Avenue story here with interest over the last, over this last year or so. And it's not often that you get to witness the actual, actually transfer of, the transfer of property for purposes of a state highway to a city and vice versa. I'm actually even more of an amateur historian of the roads and highways of the state. So I'm dealing from a, like, from a statewide perspective. There are lots of stories about, if it boils down to it, the main thing I kind of document is those kind of transfers. A lot of this, you know, I've seen, I found it interesting, like, on the, I know tonight's the Flower Avenue hearing, however, the, you know, also the 410, the fact of the broken, the broken maintenance and the inability to find, it's very interesting that there's good ability to find who owns what at what time. So, any case, that's, that's where I'm coming from. Very much interested in what happens with here forward with the story with this and with, and then also with Flower Avenue. Thank you.
Thanks. Patty Snee and Lenora Radloff. And then anybody else who hasn't signed up who wishes to speak.
I also didn't know that when I signed up, I'd be running for office. That I'd have to give $500 to the. I live at 8500 Flower Avenue and I, my partner thinks this is a wonderful concept and a great idea, so we're very excited about it, enthusiastic about it. Could you, what's the potential timeline? Is it over the next?
Could you comment?
Three years? Five years?
Well, I, I would hope that it wouldn't be over the next three or far more years. It should be within that time period. If this were to go forward and there was agreement to do some kind of a street renovation project, we'd need to work with the community, figure out, you know, what those plans are and, and then implement them. State Highway has said that if this does go forward and we do install a green street project, then they would reimburse us $696,000. My sense is that money's not just going to be sitting out there for a long time, so I think that it would have to move pretty quickly.
And there's a plan that there'd be more community hearings and a chance for input?
Yes, we haven't even started to that.
Okay. All right, great. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Lenora Radloff.
Hi, I'm Lenora Radloff, 8408 Flower Avenue. I've lived there about 35 years now, so I'm historian. You really should say, sign up if you want to testify. We all thought it was just an attendance list, but that's okay. Quite a few years ago, I can't remember how many, we were told that someone, I'm not, I think it was the county at the time, was considering, or maybe it was the same thing back then, improving that sidewalk on that Silver Spring side. I'm on the other side, but we had at that time a pathetic little neighborhood association. Keith is now the, the monitor of the.
I'm the president of a non-cultural.
Right. But he runs, he runs the listserv, so that's important. Anyway, we discussed this idea and even did some interviewing of property owners along that, that area. And I've already bent Suzanne's ear about this last time I was in the building. And the concerns then were that the, there are regulations, the disability rules for sidewalks that regulate that they have to be like eight feet wide and have cutouts and certain, certain things that if you did that, it would be really taking a lot of private property that you, unless you want to go onto the street. Now, you could narrow the street a little, but it might be a problem for parking. But basically, the concerns were serious enough so that the people who were at the meeting, which is a very small sample, said, oh, forget it, you know, we'll manage on this mess. I mean, the, the so-called sidewalk there is a mess. I mean, it goes from sand to tarmac to bumps and holes and, so anyway, yeah, it'd be lovely to have a nice, usable, pedestrian-safe walk, but if you have to go all the way with the current standards for sidewalks, it's going to cause really serious problems. The tree that they were concerned about, it wasn't Mara's tree, it was another one, has already died and been cut down, so that, that was, that was this big a tree. But it would be like right up to the front porch of some people's homes. So it, it, it's those things that you haven't gotten to yet that made us decide, forget it, it's not worth the trouble. Okay. So I think the thing is, when you get to those concerns, those details, that's when we're going to get involved and it's going to be real important.
Thank you. And just let me say that the thought has been that if there was ever a time to do this right, that what it, what it requires is doing the whole street at once. And that's why we're having this hearing, that's why we're having this discussion, so that it can be the annexation of that remaining piece of public right-of-way, not of private property, and have the whole street to deal with, with a redesign so that, in my mind, I'll just say, potentially, there might be areas that because of natural features like trees or whatever else is going on, that maybe, yes, the sidewalk does have to get wider over into the street area, but you maybe, you know, eliminate parking in that particular little area so that you have the width to do it, but then you pick up parking as soon as you can, you alternate parking, you do, you know, weave it through, whatever it might be, who knows what the design ideas are, but you have that flexibility to do it in this type of project where you wouldn't in that previous process that you were just talking about. Would anybody else who did not sign up on the list thinking they were only doing an attendance list like to comment?
I just want to add one little item, that the timing of this would be great if Washington Adventist carries through with their promise to build the gymnasium, that this would be probably a very important access route for folks in that neighborhood to get to that project on the east side. So just something to add and support the matter. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Carter Ross and I also live on the east side of Flower Avenue. This is just to voice my support for this initiative. I think this is a great idea, this, whose time has come. I guess one question I might have is, assuming this goes forward, do you have X amount of say-so in terms of placement of bus stops? Is that something that's, you're able to review or is that a county decision as far as?
Should be a county decision, but there might be the opportunity to revisit that as part of the whole design.
I'm not sure what the latitude is. I don't have a specific agenda for it, but it's part of the comprehensive review. I don't have a specific agenda for it, but it's part of the comprehensive review. I just wanted to see where that stood. Thank you.
You can petition for bus stops from right on, and they're receptive to, like, moving a bus stop rather than adding a bus stop. So there are several places where a different location would be better.
Thank you very much.
That's the process.
Anybody else? Quick follow-up.
I know I have my, yeah, my three minutes, but quick follow-up. There was reference made to some studies that were done earlier, and I know when I first moved in around 2002, there was a study done with the state because the neighborhood was interested in traffic calming. And I'm interested in that because we once had a neighborhood gathering where someone almost plowed a stolen car into Lori Radloff's house. So there was excessive speed, and the neighborhood was interested in simple devices like stop signs, and the state said, "Looked at something that looks a lot more like the Green Street in a way that you've talked about that curved as a traffic calming measure." And we all thought it was really lovely, but it seemed unlikely, given that there were no funds associated with it, and of course, it has gone exactly nowhere. So I think, again, that that would just be a really welcome notion, and I think doing the whole street gives that opportunity to, you know, move the street in ways that would both accommodate trees while at the same time maybe providing traffic calming that the neighborhood has been clamoring for a very long time. Because as the street is designed right now, people clearly feel comfortable going 35 in a 25 zone. So that's all I wanted to add. Thank you.
You have one more comment. Go ahead.
Very quickly. I just wanted to say that although I haven't been so foolhardy as to put up a wrought-iron fence in front of my house, that one thought is that, no, that in this whole discussion, I do want to point out that, and I'm sure you'll probably know that or realize this and are respectful of it, that people who do work in the public right-of-way, when they maintain their yard or the part of their yard that actually goes up to the sidewalk, are actually doing a service to the community by doing that. Even if they don't really own it, they're taking care of it, and there's something that needs to be respected from that. If my yard happens to, you know, get cut off legally a few feet from the sidewalk, I'm still taking care of it, and my neighbor is still taking care of that part. I'm sorry, so just respect for that is, and I guess Ms. Clay, your comment to my neighbor actually was the one that's sparking my irritation a little bit.
What's that?
About my friend and his, I'm joking with Jeff about the wrought-iron fence, but--
It is a nice fence. I agree.
It's an expense, and even if he, you know, if it happens to be a little bit, he actually is taking care of a property that--
You mean, when I asked him if he had gotten a survey?
Yes.
Oh, that was a sincere question.
No, I understand it was.
If he got a survey, then, if he's got a site survey, then he's safe.
Right. Okay. Okay. It wasn't snide. Okay.
Now, Councilmember Clay is never snarky.
Always snarky. But I didn't happen to be being snarky at that moment.
We're getting quick comments.
Very quick. So one thing Troy mentioned in his email, your concern was the long-term maintenance, and he actually suggested speed cameras along Flower to both slow the speed and also raise revenue for the long-term maintenance of that side.
Oh, but the cameras aren't about getting revenues.
Now he's being snarky.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you all very much. Appreciate your comments.
I had a comment.
Yes, go ahead.
Me too.
So my comment really has to do with the crux of the issue here for me is the cost of it and how we pay for it. So the Deputy City Manager did mention that the state is willing to kick in money. Right now, the county actually has $350,000 in their CIP, which is their capital improvement plan, for 2016 to redo the sidewalk. And one of the things that I think is critical is that the county actually help us and chip in on this, that we don't take the annexation, which is taking the property from the county and have the county not contribute. And I would encourage those residents who, on both sides of the east Flower Avenue, and this isn't done snidely, but really as an educational point, is to go online. You can look up anyone's property taxes for free. It's total public information. If you just put in Maryland property taxes, there's a way to do it very easily. And look at your property tax on the east side of the street, and look at the property tax on the west side of the street. You may have already done that. It's very significant. And so one is to do that and realize that the residents on the eastern side of the street, which would get this new sidewalk that the city would be responsible for maintaining for many years in the future, would get the benefit from it but not have to pay taxes. And then the second question would be, there is a process by which residents can petition to be, and they could do it with the city, to be annexed into the city of Tacoma Park if you really wanted to truly be a resident of the city. The residents on the eastern side could organize and do that. I'd love it if you joined the city officially in that way, but it would mean your property taxes would go up.
But then we'd have enough money to pay for the fence relocation.
That's true.
And I'll just add a third point to Councilmember Wright's list, which is that in the near term, any of you could contact any of your county council members and point out to them that the county really should contribute toward this project if we go forward, and they have that $350,000 in the CIP for 2016, but that's only for planning and design work. That's not even for construction.
Yeah. If I might, we've learned some new information about the money that the county has in the CIP. Apparently, in the FY '16 CIP, there's $70,000 with the thought that then another $420,000 for the facility plan would then come from the following year. The, that's, you know, $490,000 is an awful lot of money for a facility plan.
That's planning money.
The thought would be that if they would actually do the plan and feel that they needed to do the construction, that you're talking another half million dollars. So the county would likely spend a good million dollars if they were constrained by the area that's just outside of the city boundaries, between the city boundary and the Silver Spring property lines. The hope is that if we had a larger, a more flexible area to work with, that that price comes down quite a bit and can be better used with the money that State Highway has offered. Now, what we are trying to do is to get the county to contribute a significant amount to the project because, A, we would be doing the work, B, we would then be taking our long-term maintenance, and there may be other kinds of assets that we would want in the project that wouldn't be able to be funded out of $700,000. There may be some additional LED streetlights or other kinds of attributes that would be appropriate for this segment. We won't know that until we would get to that point if the council wishes to move that way. But I would urge people to communicate with the county that they do have a responsibility for this area and that it should be a joint project if it were to go forward.
Because as that makes clear, doing it this way not only would give flexibility on design to make it a better project, it would also, should, reduce costs. And in the fiscal environment that everybody finds themselves in these days, being able to do a green project with flexibility on design for lower cost should be a win-win-win.
Right.
And that's the message for the county, and that's why we would like to get some money and assistance from the county to make this happen. Councilmember Schultz.
Two quick thoughts. One is that that street is old, as can be described aptly by some of you, at the horrible condition, particularly sinkholes and stormwater that's just running all in the wrong direction. I'm concerned is once we start doing the work of preparing or rebuilding that street, of what we're really going to be faced with in terms of the subsurface. So, and that's not something that's easy to determine, I shouldn't think, until we start digging or somebody starts digging out there. So these costs, we might find ourselves, the city, facing more costs than we anticipated, which of course could limit our flexibility. The other comment is that so many of you who have testified here are from the east side of Flower, and I will follow up on what Councilmember Wright said, notwithstanding the fact that your taxes would be higher if you were part of Tacoma Park. But by golly, if you guys want to become part of the city of Tacoma Park and enjoy all the benefits thereof, let us know, because who are we to judge what your opinions should be? You know? It's a good place to own property. Thank you.
Finally, Councilmember Schenoff.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to thank all of you for coming out and sharing your thoughts and opinions on the annexation part of the project. And in addition, I hope you will come back and save those ideas you had about the actual design for when we get, when we go forward with the design phase, because there will be, if those of you who aren't in Tacoma Park aren't familiar with the rather lengthy process that these things take, because we really do solicit citizen comment on all projects. There's always plenty of time for that, as you see this evening, we've devoted considerable time just to this, just to this one rather small issue. The second thing I want to say is, I'm going to steal your ideas when I testify in front of the county and talk to the county about this project. I hope you don't mind. I will give you credit, maybe not by name, because I'm not sure I got everybody's name when I was taking notes. And the third thing is, I'll repeat, please contact your county council member, Valerie Irvin, and talk to her about, the same things you said this evening are fine, because that supports the project that we want to do. It's an opportunity, as someone said here on the council, to kind of do it right. You know, we had that design a few years ago, that had a lot of really good ideas. There are ideas out there for how to do it right. This is an opportunity to really turn that street into something really attractive. And for those of you on the Silver Spring side, if it is very attractive, not only will it be safer, traffic will be slower, and so on, but, you know, that has an impact on your property values, and, you know, if you do have to take down your fence, you'll get some recompense when you finally sell your house. What can I say? I hope you're, it is a nice fence, by the way. I know which one we're--
Would you like to sell it?
Keith, you get the last word.
I just wanted to add a comment to what Ruben just said. Valerie Irvin is not our only county representative. We've got four at-large members, three of whom are either from Tacoma Park or from right next to it. So I think it's worth our while dropping notes to Mark Elrich, to George Leventhal, and to--
Hans Reimer.
Hans Reimer.
I can't believe you're--
Thank you.
And Councilmember Irvin has the Justice and Safety Initiative, which is very important to her, so I'd like that to her.
Thank you all very much. And we will take a very short break, and we'll, oh, no, let's do the consent agenda. Sorry. Special session consent agenda. We have two items on the consent agenda. It's been moved and seconded, moved by Councilmember Seaman, seconded by somebody else.
Mr. Wright.
Mr. Wright. And all those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We will take a very short break, and we'll come back for our final two items. And we'll try and be back out here at 9:10 on that clock.
Wow, really short.
Yep.
That's really short.
Yep. I ordered again, and our intent is to, for the total of the last two items, to finish before 10 o'clock for two items. So we'll do this question--
Please hold your laughter.
No, there's cooperation up here. People want to do that, so we'll take what we need to on this next item, and then we'll use any remaining time and get out of here before 10. You could bet on this one, you'd make money.
The council is being asked this evening, a discussion by John Ursula, to designate what is currently a private parking lot, designate it for use by the general public under a metered basis. I've included in your agenda packet just some of the issues that would need to be explored if the council decided to proceed with this proposal, a copy of Mr. Ursula's proposal, and a site map that was available through the permitting process. Mr. Ursula has distributed and Jesse's handed out a cleaner version of that map that might be easier to understand. If the council decides to proceed with this, there are some things that we would need to research further, and I've got, they're identified in the memo as far as the bullet points, ranging from what type of a zone would be established, the parking times and the permit process, and then what other, what our options might be as far as partnership options. And with that, I'm going to turn over to Mr. Ursula.
Welcome, John.
Good evening. I'm back again. We've been through this a lot of times, about talking about parking in Old Town, and we've gone through a parking garage and some, just to give a little history for some of the new members of the council, talked about the parking garage and doing some additional parking in the city to help from the economic standpoint of helping all the businesses there. All of you are probably aware of the new parking lot in a sense that I've finally put together, with the new retaining wall and all of the stormwater management features that now go into the, that are tied into the parking lot, and the new ramp, the new one-way in and one-way out, so we've eliminated a major safety hazard by people trying to exit and enter the parking lot on Laurel Avenue. In the meantime, what's really happening, which is something we talked about a long time before, is that in addition to my tenants having parking for their customers, everyone else in the city is using the parking lot as well. And it's really not fair to anyone that parking lot be used that way. So my thoughts have always been that the city should get, that we could get involved with the city. The city could make some money by doing this, by taking the parking lot and turning it into a public parking facility where everyone could use it and generates a revenue for the city. In the same time, it would, we would use the funds to maintain the parking lot and do some snow removal and that kind of thing that goes along with that, that that would be generated as well. So that would be the benefit back to me. But virtually, it really is just giving the city 65 or so many spaces that can be metered that we could generate some revenue from and be fair to all of the residents of the city. They would be used properly, that-- That would be used properly, that whoever's using it would pay. We would also want to eliminate, not, we don't want any metro parking, because you know, that's another issue. So you know, it has to be just for customers of the businesses in Old Town. But in addition, the city also has 40 or so, or 50 meters out on the street, and to be honest, it's really never been monitored. And I think it's just something we need to really take a look at, in order to keep the viability of the city and all the merchants, by having a parking facility that everyone can use. So my proposal is basically to talk to the city about, entering into some kind of joint venture, and putting meters or some kind of machine system that would, we could monitor the parking lot, and have the city make a commitment to police those parking meters. Silver Spring does it, Bethesda does it, we all know the kind of revenues they generate, because they have someone going around giving out tickets and monitoring the meters. And I think the city needs to make a commitment to do that, not only for the revenue that you would generate, which is one thing in itself, but also because it generates parking for customers in the Old Town area, that they will come there because there is parking. If they, if parking's not available, I mean, my lot right now, because there's no one monitoring the lot right now, has been over full on a number of occasions already, we're over jammed. I mean, every parking space has been used. And it's because, and what's happened is, and I've had so many people come up and thank me for the parking lot, which is a nice, which is nice, but at the same time, they're also utilizing all the other businesses down the street. So Ace Hardware is benefiting, Mark's Kitchen is benefiting, all of the things, the Subway is benefiting down the street, all of the people are benefiting from using the parking lot, and a lot of the new businesses on West Moreland. And so my option is to either work something out with the city that would make sense, and the city could generate some revenue, or the alternative is for me to monitor the lot myself, which I could do, put in a gate system, you would get, if you use one of our businesses, you'll probably get a reduced parking, anyone else would just pay a parking fee, and generate that, and limit the parking exclusively that way. I don't think that's a good option for Tacoma Park, I don't think it's a good option for the businesses, I think you're, you would hurt a number of businesses by doing that. But those are the options that I have. I put in close to $800,000 into the renovations of that parking lot, and as I mentioned, I just want, for some of the council members that might not be aware, there was always a water problem down on West Moreland Avenue in the backyards, and this whole system has solved a lot of that problem, because we have new storm drains, we also are filtering the water through Filterra systems, through plant growth, it filters the water before it goes into the, into the storm drain. The water is now going, is draining in the proper ways for runoff and things like that. So in addition to the retaining wall, and a lot of the other aesthetics that were put in, I actually have two lots, if you look at that little drawing, we were going to build a building in what is the lot between the U.S. Post Office and Pizza Movers, due to the economic constraints, we had to pull that project. I still hope to build a building there, but it might be, to be honest, five to seven years before that might happen, given the economics of commercial property. So I have the extra lot down there, but I also have a certain commitment to the U.S. Post Office and the SunTrust Bank in their leasing to provide parking for their employees. But all my other leases, I do not have any restrictions, other than a few loading zones that a couple of businesses need just to survive, to have loading, unloading in the back of their property. So the lower lot, you know, could be still retained for the commitments that I have to the Post Office, then to the SunTrust Bank, and the upper lot would be completely open to the public with a monitoring system. So I'm here to see whether or not you're interested, if you are, where do we go from here? I mean, there's a lot of things to find out about, some costs, but I think I also need to know too, that the city is going to be committed to monitoring, heavily monitoring meters, the meters, and parking enforcement. You know, and that's in addition to what the police can do for ticketing, for, as well, for violations as well. Well, we're just talking about monitoring the meters themselves, and making that commitment, which I think is a good thing for, like I said, for the city of Tacoma, and all the businesses that are there, if parking is available on a regular basis. So I'm kind of hoping to, some thoughts to hear, what some of your thoughts are. I've seen a couple of comments come through on the internet, that Sarah just got to me, some of your concerns, so I'm here to talk about that and see where we go from here.
Okay. Thanks for being here, thanks for bringing this forward. I'll just make a comment first, and say that I've been around long enough, that I've been here for various discussions that the city has had with you about possibilities there, and my sense is that there might be, there might still be some people who say, "Well, why are you offering to do this?" And my sense from hearing what you said tonight was that, you know, you have your option of dealing with it yourself, but it doesn't, your sense is that it doesn't really help Old Town.
Doesn't help the city, doesn't help Old Town, doesn't help the businesses. And I think, and I've been, you know, since, I've been here since 1984, in terms of renovation of creating Old Town, and I feel, you know, I'm committed to seeing Tacoma, the commercial property in Tacoma survive, and we've been fortunate to get a few new businesses in there, but there's been some constraints. I mean, that if, you know, I don't think Ace Hardware, for instance, which has been, is a great asset to our city, I really don't think if they didn't, weren't using my parking lot, that they would sort of be surviving. I see contractors come in in the morning, they park in there, they run in, they buy two or three things in Ace Hardware, and they're out of there. If they will not come, if they can't park easily and quickly go into the store, it's just that simple, they'll go somewhere else, they go to Gallagher and Hugley, you know, or they go to Stross, Snyder's, and Silver Spring, for that couple of little parts or whatever. Right now, they're doing a tremendous business that way. You know, we, it's, I just think those businesses will be hurt tremendously if we don't do it. And I think the survival of Ace Hardware is also the survival of all of my tenants as well. I mean, I think everybody puts in, you know, having the U.S. Post Office there, having the banks and everything else is what makes us survive, and makes the other businesses continue to, they're the anchors that are there, and that's what keeps the other businesses above board. I mean, we've been through some tough times in the last two years, and they're still holding in there. And the other nice thing is that what I've always been very proud of as a landlord, is that most of my tenants, with the exception of the U.S. Post Office, let's say, or E., or SunTrust, most of my tenants are small business people, and most of them live in Tacoma Park, or live very close in downtown Silver Spring. So, and I've always felt that that's a great asset, that we maintain these small businesses. But you can't not help them, you need to help them, and we need to do that by providing parking. And I think the city has an opportunity here, and it isn't something that's going to cost money, in a sense, it's going to bring in some kind of revenue to the city. And I'm perfectly happy to let that revenue go to the city, as long as we come up with something that's reasonable, and it takes, you know, some of the costs would be involved of maintaining the parking lot. I mean, it's going to, it takes a certain amount of money to maintain a parking lot, striping has to be redone, you know, potholes do develop all over the place, snow removal, those kinds of things. So the benefit I get is that maybe we have a joint venture where Public Works is taking care of that, or doing that kind of thing, at the same time we're providing parking. So in answer directly to your question, why would I do it, I think it's because I really think it's the right thing to do. And that's all I can say. And my history shows that, that's all I can say.
Right, thanks. And I'll just make a quick comment, and go to my colleagues. I've thought about this a fair amount, and my sense is that if we do this, we want to do it with some technology that's beyond just the type of parking meters that we have on the city streets now, that there are opportunities for credit card payment, and there are opportunities for wireless monitoring and management of this type of a facility, and that if we go forward, I'd like to see it as a potential first step toward looking at a wider use of parking and management, whether it be just in Old Town or in other areas of the city. And I'll go to my colleagues, and I'll start the forehand with Councilmember Robertson.
Hi, John.
Hey, how you doing?
Good, thank you. There's an asterisk on the last number under parking meter revenue, 50% share. Do you have that piece of paper in front of you?
Yes.
Does the asterisk relate to the sentence below, saying that...
Yes, yeah, it should have been, yeah. It was that, the first year cost, the power meter putting these, if we go to some new technology metering, technology-type things, these monitoring machines that you would put in a number, and use a credit card, or something like that, all that cost, whatever they would be, yes, they would be...
That you'd want us to bear, or at least that's your initial proposal.
It would need to pay us back, I'll fund it, is what I've always...
Right, but you're saying that we should pick that up.
That would be part of paying back this charge eventually, look it out, yeah.
That's your, that's something that you're, that you're putting in here as an offer, or sort of that kind of thing.
Yes.
Great. And on the first page, Sarah, maybe this is something you could answer, there's a statement about limitations to the creation of a formal parking district was the reason that that proposal wasn't pursued. Can you tell us a little bit about what those limitations were?
In speaking with the corporate, the city attorney's office, when we initially investigated the feasibility of doing a parking district, their observations were, and experience has been, that parking districts are primarily established to offset debt, so they are a debt mechanism. In Silver Spring, for example, they're created to offset the costs of creating all of the parking lots, the surface lots, et cetera, and that with that, and that's the primary purpose of a parking district, there is also part of the parking district legislation, a requirement that the cost of managing and overseeing the parking district is, are assessed to the property owners within that district, and that they get, in exchange for this annual fee, the access to those parking spaces that are created with those revenues for their employees and their customers, or the general public, and that it benefits them when they go through and look at the use and occupancy permits for new businesses that may be established within the district itself. Based on that information, one of the concerns we had about originally, or designating Mr. Ursula's lot as a public parking space, was that it could have a negative impact on his, on the use and occupancy permits that are issued for the businesses in the strip. And recognizing that the establishment of a parking district would offset that, we've been having continued conversations with the folks at permitting services, who have finally given us something in writing that indicates that the city could establish this area as a public parking lot, through some type of an agreement with the property owner, without jeopardizing the use and occupancy permits for the existing businesses. In a sense, it's sort of a win-win situation, because we don't need to incur the costs of establishing a parking district, we don't have to assess those costs to the property owners within the district, and we give the benefit of the additional parking spaces to those businesses, at least in the initial strip. We give them credit so that they can continue to operate, or new businesses can come in, without jeopardizing their use and occupancy permit. Does that make sense?
That was a lot. I was listening for the limitations, I heard some, I heard a lot of other kind of aspects of it. I know that you're talking about a parking district, I think there's some other entity called a parking authority, and...
It's basically the same.
Same thing?
Yeah.
Okay. The reason I ask about it is that, is the kind of financial management aspects of this? If it's a joint venture, I'm kind of scratching my head, okay, how will this, who will keep track, and who will handle the reimbursements, and the snow removal, and all that stuff? And I'm for this, I think it's a good idea, but I have questions about how it would be managed over time, whether it would be John's responsibility, or the city's responsibility, or both at the same time, and that's where I kind of go, hmm, wonder if some other entity is appropriate to both do the fiscal management, and also handle allocation, if that's appropriate, or negotiations with permitting to make sure that everybody takes the best advantage of the spaces in the lot for use and occupancy. All this, and maybe I'm over-analyzing and anticipating, and that we can all do that, just find John and your staff, and that's all. But I just wanted to bring it up, because I think it's an idea, and finally, the parking district and the parking authority, the Silver Spring model is gigantic, and has to do with gigantic developers, and that's not us, that's not where we're going on this. So I'm, again, I'm just trying to think, how would this work? But in general, I'm supportive of the idea. Thanks for your answers.
And those would be options that we would consider if the council decides that this is worth pursuing.
Okay.
Councilmember Wright.
Thanks. I'm very intrigued by this. You know, first I want to thank you for all the improvements you've done to the lot, and increased spaces, I think it's helpful for the businesses, and also, thank you for being an ongoing quality and good steward of the local businesses here in Tacoma Park. I would like to hear, probably before I would say certainly yes to this, from the other businesses in the area, who, or some are tenants and some aren't, so Sarah, it might be, I don't know how we want to do that, but do outreach, or give them an opportunity to come here, what it would be, but I think it would be good to kind of get a sense of their perspective on that.
If you feel it's appropriate, we can work with the Old Tacoma Business Association and their board.
That'd be great.
I know that they have expressed interest in the past in expanding the public parking opportunities in the area.
Let me just comment too, Roz, who's the director of the Old Town Business Association, actually called me and asked me if she wanted, if I wanted her to be here tonight, and I said, "No, I think it's a little premature, because I think what we really are here tonight is to determine, does the city like the idea, does it want to pursue it, and do we want to go further and find out about some of these questions that you have about how it would be put together." So I just asked her to hold back, but she's, we could certainly work with them and the board, and you can get all, you know, the comments that you need to get.
Yes, sure. And I noticed here, you proposed a longer-term lease, or a longer-term element to the arrangement. Is that something that is required for the economics to make sense, or just...
No.
...to give you certainty around the situation?
You know, I just thought that the lot has, the lot physically has a lot, a life of 15 or 20, 15 years, let's say, 20 years is probably pushing, you get it 20 years, you know, out of the pavement before you have to do a repave, and as long as you've done some maintenance along the way. So, you know, it was just kind of an idea that at 20 years, the city would look, and we'd have to say, okay, we, you know, are we generating enough revenue that we feel that it's worth putting more money back into, or doing some additional kinds of things? I guess, I don't know, it was just a number to use, to say, that seems about reasonable to deal with, and the city, you know, can decide after 20 years too, that it's really not working for them, or it's not, or this, it's the management headache, isn't there, is it worth it? I don't know. I don't know where it would go. I would assume it would be, that we'd like to continue it and just renew it, and we'd have the options to renew it as well.
I think my concern is sort of in the, the question in my mind is kind of in the other direction of, since this is our first foray into something like this, like do we, would we want to commit to something for 15 or 20 years, or do we want to do sort of something like a five years with renewable clauses or something? So just...
Certainly open, I mean, those are the things we'd have to look at, in terms of what would be beneficial.
And then the other comment I have is just not, this isn't about this idea specifically, but whether there's the potential to make it larger, in the sense, and this is somewhat a question for you, Sarah, but you probably also have relationships with the other landlords. You know, I think of Cursio across the street, I think of Bruce Levin, so the idea that all of these lots could be, have this kind of setup where it's a public amenity, where there's metered spaces, and there's this MOU kind of arrangement between the city and...
Well, I certainly think Bruce Levin would be minimal to a discussion about it, if we entered into this. And I would hope that, Cursio is a little bit of a different breed, there's a lot of old history that's there, and it just, I can't seem to get through to him, I've tried I don't know how many times, to work with him, but, you know, I would think that there's a possibility of doing that. But he, to anyone who had joint venture with the city is just not in his realm, and you know, whereas I think Bruce would be minimal to it, and adding, it could add meters down there as well, which would, you know, to make this thing really work for everybody. I mean, it would be great, I think it's a great idea. I just, Cursio would be a little difficult. I just, Cursio would be a little difficult, but we could certainly approach it.
I mean, one of the ways might be to convince him is I think he's gonna have a situation that's gonna be a little bit problematic if his lot doesn't have meters on it and yours do.
Absolutely.
A lot of people are gonna abuse the, the unmonitored lot that he has that's free.
True, absolutely.
So it may be a kind of a conversation that potentially, I don't know who has the best relationship, but could start with either the city or you saying, we're thinking about doing this.
Right.
You know, do you want to get on board because the implications might be sort of bad for you if you're.
Good point. Point's well taken. Definitely be, have a problem with people using the lot.
Yeah. And then just want to echo Bruce's comment that I think, to as much as possible that we can use technology both for figuring out how to charge people and not the old coin system, but also around monitoring, because one of the appeals I think of making, having more spaces is the economics of monitoring, I imagine are tough on, this lot is relatively large for this area, but relatively small number of spaces compared to having somebody walk around and write tickets, and I think the more spaces you have and can have somebody spend some of their time doing that, probably the economics of it from a staffing perspective related to ticket revenue probably works better. But the other alternative would be if there's a way to actually give people tickets without having somebody present because they know cars in the space or not or what have you.
Councilmember Clay.
Hello. Usually I'm opposed to the downtown parking thing, but actually maybe kind of like this one. The eight in 16 spaces, are those in the gray shaded area?
Yes, they would be in the, in that lower lot, yes. I would just try to use that for those spaces that I've committed to under those leases, yes.
And then, is there any designated parking for the Ace Hardware?
No.
Their building doesn't have any?
Well, I mean, I think, yes, Levin's lot is just open to any tenant that he has.
And that's that lower lot.
That's the lower lot off of West Moreland.
Curves and, okay.
Right, right.
Okay. I think that it would be good to have an electronic credit card box to pay at instead of individual meters, and I think that if we move forward with this, that the lot across the street is going to get filled first, and so, at the very least, I think some courtesy attempt to reach out is.
I'd be happy to try.
Well, it's not, I mean, sure, it's, it's great that you're willing to try.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's your responsibility, I think the city has a responsibility though to acknowledge that if we move forward with this, that we recognize that it has an impact on other entities and make an official outreach. And, there's one other thing I wanted to say, this is, oh, come back to me, I forgot what it was now.
Okay. Councilmember Schultz.
Mr. Ursiolo, you and I haven't had a chance to meet.
No, we haven't.
And I want to say it's a pleasure to have you here.
Nice to meet you, sir.
Welcome the opportunity to use this forum to say hello. First of all, I just want to say how impressed I am that you undertook this whole project in the first place. Now, I realize there had to be some economic motivation behind it, it wasn't 100% altruism for helping small business in America or Tacoma Park at large, but notwithstanding that, this was a very expensive project with a lot of engineering from my perspective and therefore some risk for, it's not like you were able to gain more space to add buildings, you were just adding space for cars, so I don't know what else to say about that other than to say thank you for doing it, because I use that parking lot all the time when I shop in the stores down on Laurel Avenue.
Well, given the, just to show you some of what my tenants have commented on, because I only hear from them, obviously, about their, how their stores have done, but we did open the parking lot before Christmas, before the season, and got the bulk of the lot open, and they were, they were just so supportive that people were just saying, oh, it's just great, it's so easy to come up now and just park and come in and shop, and a few of our businesses actually did 20% more than they did the year before, which is almost astronomical, you know, for that. So a couple, not everyone, but a couple of businesses did. So, so I think in that respect, and all the accolades and thank yous that I've gotten from people about the lot has made it, you know, I just, it just has a whole new feel, you know? It just makes you feel like, you know, hey, it's easy enough to go up there and shop and do that kind of thing. So, again, coming back to that, I just think that's really what we need to do and, and make it available to everyone.
Well, let me ask you a few questions. Obviously, you have a sense about how your merchants, the ones that are your tenants, feel, because obviously, a merchant might say, well, gosh, this used to be free parking and now people have to pay, therefore, my customers aren't going to come, which I don't think would make sense for them to say that, but I was just wondering if you've gotten a sense from, about how they feel about it.
I, it's funny, I don't think it's from the commercial, the retail tenants, because they think parking's essential, and if you can find a parking space easily, they'll come, and 50 cents an hour, 75 cents an hour, they're going to really make that much of a difference. They don't seem to have a problem.
Oh, good.
The people that have the problem are the office tenants upstairs who feel that they are deserving of a private space that should go along with their offices, and so it's just kind of a, I thought that was kind of a, I was surprised at that kind of thing. They're the only ones that I felt think that it's not a good idea.
Do you, do you have a feeling of maybe about what percentage of the people that park there are taking advantage? In other words, they're like parking there for more than two hours, they're obviously using the parking, sort of taking advantage of it? Do you have any sense of if it's like?
To go to other businesses that aren't?
Well, just sort of like leaving a car there for more than two hours would probably be a benchmark.
I've had a few, I've had a few, and we try to monitor which ones, you know, every once in a while in the morning, especially in the morning hours when people go down to the metro.
Right.
I have a, one of my employees, he kind of looks, and if he sees them going down the street, you know, we kind of watch out which car, we put a note on it and tell them that it's private reserve parking and they can't park there, and, you know, usually that's enough to give away, but yes, we have some problems of people doing, trying to get away with not having to park in the metro and walking down, so that is something, the policing of the meters will obviously make, stop that as well.
Yeah.
So I'm losing some spaces to that as well.
Yeah, because turnover is essential.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, that's a crucial part of it.
Absolutely, and that means enforcement's essential, and if we can't, if enforcement
isn't there and we're the ones that would be doing it, not you.
Exactly.
Then we might as well not even.
Might as well not even consider.
Just not even bother, but my impression is, is that the status quo isn't going to last, that one way or the other, one of these two options you've outlined is what is going to have to happen, from your point of view.
Yes.
As the owner of that lot, and just for people to say, oh, gosh, no, we like it the way it is, that's, that's not a.
That's not a viable option.
So I want to ask you quickly about this space down the lower lot here where you're, that's earmarked for some, for the SunTrust and the post office. Is there any way that if future building were built, that it could be built out over that parking area such that you could retain some of the spaces underneath?
Yes, I would think that the kind of building that I would be proposing now, given the economic situation, what I think might be viable in the next five or seven years would be a smaller building than I had originally proposed, and therefore, yes, it would probably, maybe half of those spaces would be retained, could be retained under the building. And then the other is there, this, the, what's called the grass area, the green, the green area.
I always want to ask you about that.
That was where we were going to put the original parking garage that we talked about a number of years ago, that could tie right into the lot. That could certainly become a surface lot with a, with a green foundation, you know, where water would still permeate into the ground.
Probably.
Wouldn't have to be, wouldn't have to be a blacktop, and it could be landscaped very nicely, so you could certainly pick up some additional spaces there as well, down the road, so there is some options there, and, or that could be the area for the post office people, and you could reopen the lower lot to everyone else.
Yeah.
That kind of thing.
I'm really predisposed to this idea of what we've been talking, I think it's an excellent idea, I think it's necessary to have the turnover, make sure we don't have commuters parking there for the health of the business, and I think you deserve purely from the huge investment you've made, the opportunity to generate a little revenue directly off that parking lot, and the fact that it could help the city get some revenue is gravy, from my point of view, so I thank you for this idea.
Karnak has visited and says the answer to the question is 10:30. The question is, when are we going to get out of here? Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for coming back to us with another proposal for parking and a joint venture, and as you recall, you know, when we talked about the parking garage several years ago, I was unsupportive of that, but I appreciate your creativity in coming back to us with a new plan. I'm supportive moving forward with this, and I look forward to getting the, you know, staff's ongoing advice on this, but right now, it looks, looks good, and other than that, the questions I had stacked up have been asked by my sagacious colleagues, and so I'll just say thank you, and thank you for your dedication at Tacoma Park, too.
Thank you, appreciate that, Bill. Thank you.
Councilmember Snipper.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi. I too want to thank you for what I consider a very interesting proposal. I'm very supportive of going forward with seeing how we can work this out. I have a couple of observations. One, I think office workers should definitely pay for parking. I'm a big believer in that. I want to discourage their use of cars. I would like them to commute some other way and not, not use their cars, and the same, I feel, is true for others. I think paying 50 cents or 75 cents an hour, whatever it comes out to be, will discourage some people from using their cars, they'll walk or come other ways, and that's all to the good. I have a kind of Western concern, which is, I was looking at the revenue estimates that you have here, and I didn't, could you tell me a little bit how you got the $4.50 per day? What are you assuming there?
Well, I just assume, you know, again, it has to do with the enforcement that we were talking about, how much you enforce the parking, but, you know, you just figure as an average, I just took a number without being too generous and at the same time not being too restrictive, just use that as a number to give some estimate of value to say, this is the kind of numbers we could generate. There was really not any, any thought other than, than, you know, each meter won't be used 100% for eight or 10 hours a day, you know, you just pick a number that you think as an average they would do per day, per week, that type of thing, to come up with a number. But that's something that we really need to look at, I mean, I don't know how to really calculate that, and maybe that's something that the staff can come up with from other jurisdictions, parking jurisdictions, that we can ask, what's an average meter do when you're policing the meters fairly regularly?
We have parking meters along the streets now, so we have actual experience with parking meters, and it would be interesting to see, the city could get a rough idea of what kind of revenue they're getting from those meters.
But again, enforcement's a little lax right now.
Well, not according to residents that I know.
Oh, okay. I'm glad to hear that.
Including Tom Hucker, who, he and his partner both got tickets and, you know, were kind of annoyed with me when I.
I got a ticket over in the junction, but I never had a ticket over in, I was at Animal Hospital a little too long and I got a ticket, so they were enforcing it.
Somebody's ticketing anyway, and, but I do worry that that's, $4.50 a day per meter seems a little high to me, because I've been in that lot at many times and, you know, seen a tiny fraction of people on it, so I am concerned that the 91,000 estimate is a little on the high side, so I'd love to see some supporting stuff that we got from other meters or other jurisdictions or whatever before we felt comfortable with it. Do you want to speak to it now, Sarah?
We have undertaken with the support of the state through their community legacy program, some parking studies of the area is part of the development of the parking garage that was several years ago. What we would probably do is take that information, recognizing it's somewhat dated, and marry it up somehow with the information as far as the parking meter revenues that are generated by the city now. We should be able to come up with a number, it will probably be fairly conservative, but at least it's a, it's an option.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ray, you have another question?
It's actually slightly unrelated, but my constituents would be upset with me if I didn't ask. I think every door, the everyday gourmet spaces, is it one of your properties? And I was just curious if you have any update on when they might be reopening for business?
Can we go off record? No, but. Okay. Can I answer that later?
Yes.
Okay.
Councilmember Clay.
I remembered the other thing I was going to say.
Oh, good.
But then I also had another comment. Charging for parking helps keep the spaces turning over, which is great for retail, so I think that's terrific. But Tacoma Park residents and other people who get tickets in this parking lot are going to be unhappy, and they're going to write letters to the council and the city manager, and they're going to complain, just like all the other people who write letters about the tickets that they get around the school and on Laurel Avenue, and I just wanted to put that out there. So they're used to, they're used to not having to pay for parking in that lot, and they're going to be shocked that they have to pay and that the city is enforcing it.
And when they've come out and the officer's just writing them a ticket at that moment.
That's right. Because they were only two minutes late. I don't mind that, I just wanted to remind everybody that it's going to be happening.
We welcome letters.
Okay, so it sounds like there is consensus on the council that we want to pursue this, and we'll need to come back to it once things get developed a little bit more, but thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you. And it's four minutes of. So, we have one final item, which is discussion of strategic plan priorities. We have gone through this a number of times, we had some information that went out to the council and we got back. Did you want to give us the results of that? And I know that you've talked about wanting to try and wrap this up, and there were some thoughts that colleagues had about how best to do that in a fairly quick fashion.
Yeah, just very briefly, as indicated in the agenda packet, staff had thought it might be helpful for the council to go through the priority projects and try to assign some priority ranking. My apologies that we did not get this out to you sooner, I think because of the short timeframe, some members of the council have not had a chance to do this, so I think the information that's before you this evening is still somewhat preliminary, but Jesse was kind enough just before the meeting to compile the information that we had, and that will give you some sense of how, those of you who've had a chance to fill this out, assigned ratings in each of the subject areas as well as sort of overall ratings, I think obviously you still need to have everyone weigh in and go through that process if the council feels this is a useful approach. If you've had a chance to look at this at all, clearly there is a, kind of a lack of consensus and agreement in terms of overall priorities, so certainly further council discussion will be needed, not necessarily this evening, but at some future date. I guess my hope is in the next few weeks that council would be able to devote some time to this, because I think it would be very helpful for me to have that guidance and direction as we go into the FY12 budget process.
Councilmember Clay.
So I think when we do this again, it would be helpful to have everything from, for example, financially sustainable on the same page. I think it's going to be really difficult for me to go, I don't think I can go through it tonight in a meaningful way in the timeframe that we have available, because the flipping of the pages, I think, makes it not very feasible. But other than that, I think it's, it's good to see the areas where we have agreement. I thought it was interesting, we had some agreement around stormwater as a priority and economic development plans, and the New Hampshire Avenue Concept Plan, and I saw one, Task Force duplication got four priority ones. concept plan, and I saw one, that task force duplication got four priority ones in the individual, and two priority ones, and a priority two in the overall. So I think that there is some, there's some agreement. And then there's some that don't have any at this point, and, you know, might be useful then to, if, when Councilmember Robinson and Snipper fill it out, they don't fill into those squares that we dropped those off for the rest of our conversation.
Councilmember Snipper.
But you didn't put it on the form.
Yes, you didn't, you didn't draw within the lines.
I didn't draw within the lines. It's true, I did not draw within the lines. I spent a fair amount of time going through our previous efforts on this, and, you know, in general, I put my comments in an email, which I can summarize by saying, really, a few things. One is that I was very pleased to find out, as I went through this, just how many of these projects are actually underway as proposed or in slightly different forms. It's, it's actually pretty cool to see many of these things happening. It's easy to lose sight of that. We are doing stuff on here. I cited a couple obvious examples, I think of the energy efficient public works facility, reviewing the tree ordinance, various development opportunities around the city, like, like New Hampshire and Old Town and so on. Several of the environmental projects really fall under what the Task Force on Environmental Action put together, and they did tremendous amount of work and incorporated a lot of our ideas. And quite a few of the crime prevention activities that we had in the strategic plan are, are actually underway and going along. So it occurred to me that what would be helpful is, is to take account of that, to make sure that, I wanna put it this way, that we take credit for having done something, you know? It's not like we have all these things still to do, quite the contrary. We're, we've started many of them, or parts of many of them. And I think what would be nice is in the next round, to take the material we have with the suggestions that people have given, but make sure we include those things that are ongoing, come up with a little description of them. And that will serve a couple functions. One, it will indicate that we are in fact making some progress. This isn't just a talking exercise, although we've certainly done plenty of that. But it'll also help us understand we're, we're already doing so much that it just doesn't make sense to add another project to it. If staff, I'll just pick on a staff, if the public works staff are fully engaged in doing activities that fit them, it doesn't really make a lot of sense in the near term to add, you know, a whole bunch of new projects. But if there are other parts of the city that have some slack, and I know there isn't a lot of slack, some, being the operative word, then we might have that color when we ask the, the project to go forward. And I fully, I wanna emphasize also, is I really think we need to not just focus on the very near term projects, but also spend the time looking at what projects we're gonna do in the medium term and what projects we're gonna do slightly longer. And the reason for that is, I know I personally have some projects that I would like to see go forward, and I would feel better about the rest of you not agreeing with those, if I knew that they were, okay, a couple of them are in the medium term and one or two of them in the long term, so I know they haven't fallen off the, you know, the map altogether. So I urge us, and I'm not sure who the us is, to take the material, I'm suggesting a process, in other words, take the material and create a spreadsheet that has rows in it with the projects, but have the projects include what the city is already doing, so that we can see what we are already doing, and then have columns for the stuff that's underway, the stuff that we're talking about doing in the next year or so, the stuff we're talking about doing in two to four years, some medium term, and then the things that we're gonna have to push out to later years. So that's my suggestion for a, for a project. Thanks.
Councilmember Schultz.
For a process.
Yeah, I'll just say a couple things to follow on to Councilman Snipper, and that is, in, in one case where it says, under livable community, identify emerging crime patterns, do neighborhood based prevention, engage in cross jurisdictional efforts, I didn't put a, a checkmark there, even though I know that it is a critically important thing, because my assumption is that this is something that our police department is and has been doing for a really long time. So to me, it sort of said, you know, why is this even on here? Because it's standard, it's, it's what our police department ought to be doing as a standard operating procedure. And I assume that they are doing it, and I'm not sure by making it a priority, if we gain, what are we telling them? That they're not doing it adequately, or that they need to do twice as much? That's just an example of one thing, and of how we might be able to make this thing be a little more comprehensible to all of us who are focusing on this. And the other thing is like, the adopt a plastic bag ban and the adopt a ban on polystyrene or styrofoam, those could be possibly combined into one. And so there's probably, that's an example of, maybe there's others like that, that could be easily merged, because they're quite similar, and we could get a better concentration of preferences. That's all I wanted to say. That's just using those two examples to make my points.
Might I suggest that Councilmember Snipper work with the city manager and/or her designee to come up with the realigned chart with input from those whose initials aren't on here? I don't know. It would be helpful to get the rest of the initials on here fairly quickly, and then realign the chart and get it back out to us for additional comment, and we'll try and do this again next week, so that we have this going forward, or next week or two weeks. I'm just thinking about the 22nd is our discussion with the city manager about budget priorities and how this ties into that. I, I'd go with your preference on when this need, when this would be most valuable to you.
Let me give that some thought, and I'll talk to Councilmember Snipper and see how fast we can pull something together.
Yeah. And if somebody else feels that they wanna be a part of that, I guess I would say, weigh in. Okay, other comments? Do you have something? All right, then we have our process going forward, so we can put this baby to bed. Thank you, we're adjourned.